Okay, all right, the light is on and good evening, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order and would you like to join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mary, could we get a roll call, please?
Bolson?
Here.
Mike Sykes?
Yep.
Bessie Johnson?
Here.
Rich Callum?
Here.
Alex Johnson?
Here.
Bill Coburn?
Here.
Okay, before we do our first order business, which would be the proclamation, we have a couple folks within our city who are retiring. And we really don't want them to retire, but we kind of have no choice here, so we're going to kind of make them go through a little recognition this evening. So Chief Latanzio and Ed Gallagher, would you like to come forward? All right, you knew this was coming. I mean, you two have been around for a long time and you've seen many of these presentations. So let's start with Ed. Do Ed first? Or should we make Ed wait?
These librarians are all right.
Oops, upside down. We've got the key to the city and it's in recognition of Ed's 20 years of outstanding service to the Albany Public Library and the City of Albany. Ed's leadership, passion, investment, vision, and heart for serving secured the private donation that led to creation of a new main library and an endowment that provides critical funding for the library collection, formed partnerships with neighboring libraries, increased library services, put books into the hands of young children through the Dolly Parton Library Early Literacy Program, and ensured that all Albany school students have library cards. Libraries are America's most democratic institutions. Ed made sure that Albany's is among the very best. Ed Gallagher, library director, December 16, 1998 to January 31, 2020. Excellent. Thank you. And many people don't remember, but I remember when Ed used to sit in the audience and was our Democrat Herald reporter for the city before he became employed with the library. So we remember that and we always thought, okay, he's just this person that came from the East Coast, you know, and here he's a reporter here in Albany and look at, look where you were and you left a legacy. So, thank you, thank you so much, Ed. Thank you for your service.
Did you say you were supposed to?
Okay, all right. These are really kind of hard to see. Okay, "In recognition of Mario's outstanding service to the Albany Police Department and the City of Albany, Mario's leadership, dedication, and innovation establish a precedent of excellence for Albany's law enforcement personnel. Mario's career is distinguished by his efforts to increase community-oriented policing and partnerships, achieving CLIA accreditation for the department, reducing Albany's crime by utilizing ComStat, and tirelessly pursuing a new police station that will serve Albany for generations to come. Mario Latanzio, Albany Police Chief, July 1, 2013 to January 31, 2020." And you know me, I'm not, you know, I wouldn't go without saying a few words, but things that kind of stand out, you know, when it came to Mario coming. I remember he wanted to know when he first came, what is the big issues here? What do we really need? And back then, it was dealing with panhandling. And if you think about today, you don't see much in panhandling today, but he brought to, the skills he brought to us to really look at solving problems and really being able to see what we could do in trying to serve the homeless, and that was trying to be able to get the homeless into shelters and off the streets to have more of a safe environment. You worked really hard, and that's one thing I'll always remember, is how you were really able to, you know, bring the city council, bring us ordinances to provide the tools for your police department to be able to, be able to do its job. But also, you knew then, back then, we needed a new police station, and boy, you just took that, you know, with that and you just made that one happen, and it was just a beautiful station. So much was put into the station to be able to make it be functional and for long term, and I'm glad your name is on that building, too. So we're very, very grateful for everything that you provided for our city. So, thank you, Chief, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Ed and Mario, now that you have keys to the city, we're going to change the locks, okay? I wanted to say a word to both of you in, by way of thank you from, from the city manager. You were both excellent leaders and of departments that have very different missions, but which are both oriented in the same direction, for quality public services, for a better Albany community. And in your ways, you've led, led your departments toward that. And I've been here for a short time in comparison, but so one other thing that I'd like to thank you for is your role in helping me to try to get up to speed in this job, which is appreciated more than you know. So thank you both very much.
They will be greatly missed, so, two outstanding leaders. Okay, all right. With that, next is the proclamation. And I don't see Floyd Bacon here, I think he wanted this proclamation, asked for it to come forward again. "This is four chaplains Sunday, February 2, 2020. Whereas February 2, 2020 will mark the 77th anniversary of the sinking of the troop ship USAT Dorchester, which carried to their deaths four US Army chaplains who stood united in prayer as the ship went down. And whereas these four chaplains from diverse religious backgrounds gave their own life jackets to four soldiers and thus sacrificed their own lives to save the lives of others. And whereas the heroic deeds of the chaplains Lieutenant George L. Fox, Lieutenant Alexander D. Good, Lieutenant Johnny P. Washington, and Lieutenant Clark Lee Pulling, and their combined act of supreme devotion and sacrifice for American liberty and human freedom will be an inspiring and ever-shining example of real brotherhood for all time to the, to the people of the world. And whereas we must all see to it that their supreme sacrifice, along with that of all servicemen and women, to the common cause of human freedom and justice for all shall not have been in vain. Now therefore, I Sharon Canopan, Mayor of the City of Albany, Oregon, do hereby proclaim February 2, 2020 as four chaplains Sunday in Albany, Oregon, and call upon all citizens to commemorate the day with appropriate observances. And witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed as 22nd day of January, 2020." Okay, all right, thank you, folks, listening to that. And so, next we have business from the public. Is there anyone here that wanted to bring an item forward to the council this evening? Okay, not seeing anyone. And then council, you do have adoption of a resolution, this is on page five. Did staff want to make any comments on this, Chris?
This is your department.
Thank you, Mayor. So on December 2, Mark Bernard from ODOT Public Transit Division and I made a presentation to the council about the concept of constructing a new public restroom train station. Mark is here tonight also and can help answer questions if you have them. I want to provide a little bit of background for the council and the public on this subject. So there are restrooms inside the train station at the Albany Multimodal Center. The city owns the, the train station building and leases it to Amtrak. A couple of years ago, Amtrak chose to install locks on the restroom doors because of abuse of the facilities and illegal and illicit behavior in the restrooms and maintenance costs, et cetera. They provide the code to the restroom for their customers. There's also a single restroom on the exterior of the Albany Transit Building. That restroom was not built to be a general public use restroom, it's built more to commercial restroom standards. Initially, it was not open to the public, but was used by transit drivers when they needed a break after business hours, rather than going into the building and dealing with the alarm system and all that, they could just go use the restroom conveniently there. After Amtrak locked their restrooms, we began getting frequent requests to use the bathroom at the transit office. And those restrooms that are interior to the building are not designed for public use, they're not especially convenient to access, and it created a little bit of an issue as far as who should they let into the building and who not. So we decided to open the exterior restroom for the public. The exterior restroom was also quite heavily misused and damaged, and after multiple incidents, we decided to lock it and take the labeling off the window. So at this point, there are no public restrooms available on the property to anyone other than Amtrak customers, and those restrooms are only available when the train station building is open. Albany Transit staff continues to have frequent, if not daily, requests to use the restroom in their building. There have also been complaints to city staff and on public forum about the lack of facilities at the train station to the point that we've had conversations with the Visitors Association about trying to work on this issue. On the other hand, closing the public restrooms, along with some other actions like addressing panhandling, prohibiting alcohol on the property, ODOT worked on the overpass there, has virtually eliminated the negative influences that were common at the train station property about 10 years ago when I was working there. But we still do have regular occasions to clean up human waste on this property from one person or another. So the request this evening is for the council to review and discuss the submission of a grant application to the Federal Transit Administration for the design and construction of a new restroom facility on the property. Mark Bernard from ODOT Public Transit has drafted the application, and while the city is required to provide the local match, he has identified potential sources of funding and in-kind match that would result in no funds being spent out of Albany Transit budgets. The grant also includes additional funding for routine maintenance that I estimate would pay for about two years' worth of maintenance of the new facility. After that, ODOT has indicated that they would support grant applications for the city to apply for additional funding for ongoing maintenance for at least one or two stiff funding cycles. It's certain, there's no denying that at some point, the operating costs and maintenance costs of this building will be Albany's to bear, but we can probably get at least six years, if not more, of funding through this process. Obviously, there are pros and cons to this project. Building a new restroom facility is likely to invite some trouble back to the property. There is currently a problem, however, with both public urination on the facility at this point, as well as a perceived lack of customer service on the city's part by not having public restrooms available to the variety of people that use the train station, including Amtrak customers who are there outside Amtrak operating hours. And my last point I'd like to make is that if you foresee the need to build a public restroom on this property or in this part of town, there's probably not going to be a way to get it done for no cost that we can come up with in the future. The total cost that, to build the building and get it permitted and maintained for the first two years, it's about $200,000. So getting a facility like that at virtually no cost to the city, the only cost we're anticipating is some in-kind match for work to do to get the project through permitting. That opportunity is probably not going to come up anytime soon. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and would just like to say we do need a decision because this grant application is due on February 3.
So Chris, so the application, it will come back in an agreement, won't it? Then the council will have to approve the agreement.
That's right.
Is there anything then, I mean, that's something that we could look at when it comes to getting the agreement, that if, once the funding is away for the maintenance, if we see that there is a problem, that we're having some, you know, higher demands on our city services, then maybe the hours could be reduced or somehow to be able to address any sort of, you know, unforeseen type, you know, issues?
Sure. So first of all, the, the way the grant process works, we would come back to request permission to accept the grant if it is awarded by the FTA. And there's the possibility that they may not fund it in the way we've requested, so for instance, if they do not agree to fund the operating costs, you know, that might be a cause of concern, we would discuss with the council whether or not to accept the grant at that time. As far as discussing operating hours and those sorts of things, the council can tell us what they would like us to do with that facility. My initial thought right now is that it would have, you know, open and close hours, and we would have either staff or contractors go through, lock the facility, clean it, and then unlock it in the morning. So that's similar to the way parks facilities work typically as well, so, but those types of decisions, I think, are, you know, able to be discussed down the road. If we get funding for it, we can operate it how, however we would like.
Okay, yeah, Dick?
Yeah, do any trains stop during the middle of the night and passengers can get off, but mainly get on?
I don't have the Amtrak schedule completely memorized, but I think the last train gets here late in the evening, like around 10:00 or so. And there is an early train in the morning, 6:00 or so, that I know some people take who commute for work. The train station right now doesn't open until 9:15, and there are at least a couple of trains that are leaving before the station is open, and, and if they're there after about 7:30, they usually are over at the transit office asking to use the restroom or get in out of the cold. We've had that happen a few times this winter.
Well, I know the one leaving, it's, it's going to be on schedule when it gets here, but the one that leaves Los Angeles, and it was a couple, three years ago, I think, that I tried to check on it. They don't even put it on the schedule it was running, so hell of a skeleton.
Yeah, there are a lot of variables. I like to take the train.
My point is, if they're closed at night, that's unfortunate, I think.
Well, as it stands right now with the published schedule, the building is closed when scheduled stops are happening at the Albany Station right now.
I'm talking about the restroom.
The restrooms are closed because the Amtrak customers can only get in the building when the station person is there.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the outdoor restroom.
Oh, the outdoor restrooms, I see. Yeah, so that, as I said, we can discuss that schedule however, whenever we get there. There are restrooms on the trains, though, so, I mean, hopefully that would help those people.
Okay, Bill?
Well, I think there's a need, but I think we're going to have the same problem we've had before. So again, we can discuss that in the future. I'm not opposed to proceeding down the road, but my thought is, is of the cleaning, if you go to, you know, let's take a fast food restaurant or something, you know, typically on the back of the door, there's a schedule where somebody's checking that, you know, every hour. And my concern is that, you know, the public can use it, and the public I'm speaking of are not the ones riding the train, and it's going to be a mess, and you get off the train with your child to go in the restroom, and welcome to the third world. So it, obviously details that can be worked out, but, you know, the idea of somebody going in and cleaning it up and locking it up for the night and then opening it up the next morning is not going to be adequate. So there is going to be an ongoing expense.
Who cleans Amtrak restrooms? Do they clean them?
They're responsible for the janitorial service. I don't know if the staff does it or they hired out, I'm not sure.
But theirs are available when they're open during the day, but only to customers?
Yes, only to Amtrak customers. And we have, so currently we have Amtrak trains and buses, and so they can come in and, and get the code to the restrooms. We also have commercial bus service, we have the Point Bus, which is a state contracted service, then we have the Bolt Bus and the, what's the new one? Flix, Flix Bus. So we have two commercial bus services. We have all the public transit riders, the train station is a transfer point for, not only for Albany services, but also for the Lynn Shuttle and the Coast to Valley Express. We're going to be expanding our service, we've talked about that with the council. Coast to Valley Express, I think, is quintupling their service or something. So there's going to be potentially quite a bit more public coming through the station. So there's a lot of people that do not get the code to the bathroom, I guess is my point, during the day.
Well, it's just a, you know, problem, we're going to have to continue to work on it and try and come up with unique solutions. I don't think it's new for any city, certainly it's new for Albany, but, you know, we had some pretty good discussion on the, on the dais with the port of potty over here at the church, yet that was intended to solve some of the problems that you're talking about with the human waste on the sidewalks and so forth, so.
And I think.
I think it's worth pursuing, but we're going to have to put a lot more thought into this, and quite honestly, I think it starts with the design.
Right.
There's all kinds of new designs that are trying and address these problems.
Sure. Yeah, that was the point I was just going to make, is there's some, some work we can do with the design and the placement and the lighting and, you know, all of those things to help minimize our negative impacts that we're going to see. You know, to me, it really comes down to trying to minimize what we expect the negative problems to be, and, you know, if it's a solution that the council feels is, is needed at this time, then we'll do our best to do that, either structurally or operationally, try to minimize those impacts.
Okay, Bessie?
I think it was Bill who said at the last, the last time we discussed this was, there are the different types of facilities where they can just be hosed down.
Sure.
And I think that's, you know, the best answer, I mean, it's, it's a natural thing. People need some, people need somewhere to go, you know? And I know it's going to probably be abused, but gotta do what you gotta do. I mean, how can you have a train station, people waiting for, to pick up somebody, and I know what Dick is saying about the train coming up, we had a friend of ours come up from San Jose one time, well, passenger trains have to wait for the freight trains.
Sure.
And so, I mean, he was, he was hot when he got here, but it was like three hours late. And so, you know, people are waiting, and, I mean, there are restrooms on the train, great, but not with the people that are waiting for them.
Sure.
Or waiting to get on the train, so.
I think it's something we just have to do.
Rich?
We need to move this thing along, I mean, it's, I think we can agree that we need to take the next step, so at this point, I would move to approve the resolution.
Do we get to hear from a consultant who came all the way down here?
We didn't know that.
Were we going to tell someone?
I, I, it's been coming, I'm promoting.
I second that, by the way.
Okay, if you'd rather not, that's fine.
There's a couple things I did hear from you that I think are, are, and Chris did a great job describing, the potential risks and the need for this facility. In our conversations, we sort of narrowed some of the options down, but Bessie sort of indicated, and that is, you know, if you have a design that's really amenable to being perfectly clean.
Yes.
To remain sanitary, and one of the designs we looked at, you know, this would have to be, since it's federal money, we would have to be a procurement, so identify a brand right now. Many of these are, or one that we looked at has a central locker with basically a charge hose and a canister for disinfectant, and then you basically just numb the hose out and open the door and the glass and place it. So in a sense, it's, you really don't even have to step inside very far to make sure that the bathroom is, is sanitary for me. Beyond that, it might be worth noting that we've identified about only a number of $15,000 in potential match money that they've already pledged to from the ODOT Passion Rail Section. So, you know, they are, they are the ones that coordinate with Amtrak directly to ensure that passenger rail service is delivered in the morning, and they're, they see this as evidence. That's about all I have of the input Chris put in, give it a little bit.
Excuse me, are these, the planned facility, is it ADA compliant, senior safe, elder safe?
Sure, it would have to be, yes.
Yeah.
Also make sure.
Yeah, all of those things, it's federal money, so we're going to be very diligent about this, and about budgets and stuff, and then these are things that you have to have a pretty tight application to fund it, and I think it's a good project, and you can really have a really competitive project.
So it'd be unisex, so, or it'd be two?
Two.
Two of them, okay.
There's a locker in the middle between.
Okay, thanks.
We don't have, we don't have 72.
That's the design, and this is because we have to do this, um, process. As I said, a lot of these designs are similar.
Chris and I were talking earlier today, and I think this is a, this is a great opportunity, I'm really grateful that we have the support we have, but I wanted to point out that with everything we do, I think about the lifecycle costs and what it's going to cost to maintain things over the life of whatever asset it is, and you heard Chris say that we've been provided, or will be provided, six years approximately of maintenance, somewhere around that. After that, then it is our responsibility, and thankfully, it sounds like it doesn't cost a lot to maintain it, but it's, it is something that has to be thought about with everything that we acquire.
Couple ideas there, and I'm going to do the, the, the reason it was likely that it will be funded, because this statewide, that is the money that it would be going out for, I don't know what other application we could have, and that would be in 2021, just for reference.
And some of it is not just on maintenance, can be also demand on our police department, too, and, I mean, we're going to, it's kind of the unknown right now, but it was a pretty high demand on our police department, the activity that we had before we had to start locking them, so that's going to be a tough piece, but we don't want to see this happening where it's putting a higher demand on our police department, too.
Right.
But, yeah.
I think that's totally a balanced way to look at it, because I look at that site as being challenging anyway, mainly because there are no clear sightlines to other areas of the city, when you're at this, at that transit center, and the restroom station. So this is going to be a dynamic thing, and I think probably all the staff, I hope that we are able to approach in the future here with, you know, a positive indication of funding, and we can have a further conversation about it.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? There's been a motion and a second, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion care, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, next is levying assessments for sewer connection.
Next is levy assessments for sewer connection and system development charges at 3502 David Avenue Northeast. Is there questions for staff on this one? This starts on page six.
Is this a residential zoning area?
I believe it is. Residential?
I really don't know. This is not my project, but Gina is nodding yes, so hopefully.
So this is one where we started to being able to allow somebody to finance system development charges.
We have allowed people to finance system, uh, system development charges for years. As interest rates went down at banks, people could get loans much better rates than what we charge. And so this one, I believe this is putting a trailer onto a piece of property, and then it sounds like they have another property they're planning to sell, and then they would pay off the, the liens at that point. But we do, we would take a lien on their property, so when the property was sold, we would be first in line to receive our money.
So what's our interest rate then?
Six point five five percent.
Okay. That's why we just hardly see them, yeah.
There's someone making money out of it.
Okay. Counsel, there's a resolution on page six.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. Next is adoption of the consent calendar. If there isn't any items that need to be pulled off this evening, I'll entertain a motion.
Is this automatic? Have we sent a note of thanks to Mr. Koeman for serving, or is it TLT Advisory Committee?
Yes.
So we don't have to pull that off and decide?
No, it's always, it's just standard practice.
Good.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. Next is, these were put on the, it's in the memo, these were put on the consent calendar last week or two weeks ago, and I was kind of wondering, because it didn't really identify who was going to be appointed, and I just thought, well, it must be just for the regular existing, existing council member that was going to be serving, so I think Bessie, for the hospital facility authority, the committee that never meets, did you want to still be on that one?
Am I on it now?
Oh, no. Hospital, no?
No, I don't think I'm on that one. I'm on the audit.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
I think I was. I was.
Yeah.
Okay. It's Alex and Rich.
Yeah.
But you guys' terms not, whose terms?
The staff report identifies that you should be appointing either Sharon, Bessie, or Mike to this committee, and yes, they do not meet, but it's a requirement of ORS that we have this committee until the particular bond is paid off.
So it's not listing the current position and the expiration for filling that position? Because it shows Sue Folden, it would be taking Sue off.
Right.
Right? Okay. So it's just who wants to be on?
We changed it, I believe, last year so that it was all counselors, since they do not meet, and there are filing requirements, it's just easier to have it be counselors.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So, so it's either me, Bessie, or Mike, so who wants to be on that?
Go for it, Bessie.
All right. I'll go for it and really be on it.
Okay. Can we get a motion for Bessie?
No.
Motion to appoint Bessie Johnson to the hospital facility.
I thought Mike nominated.
Yeah, I did. I nominated Bessie.
Mike made a motion to nominate Bessie.
Second.
Okay. Second. All right. All right. Any other nominations? Not? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. And then next would be, let's see, so I'm on it, Alex is on it, Bessie's on it, Sue, and Sue's and mine expire, so we'd need to have a motion to continue that. I think we only usually meet once a year, and we already have that meeting on our calendar.
Is that the audit committee?
Yeah, audit committee.
What, what date is the?
Can't remember. I'd have to look it up.
It's in February.
Yeah. It's been scheduled already.
I'm excited to be on it, if somebody wants me to be.
Your honor, there isn't a.
So is there a motion?
This one needs to be Sharon, Mike, Rich, Bill, or Dick Olson.
And I'm willing to continue, since I've always been on that audit committee, and then I've already got it on the calendar, so that's, and then the budget committee member, Sue. Sue does a great job.
Well, since, since Rich has got so much more time on his hands now, I'd nominate Rich to be on the audit committee.
Whatever.
I'll second that.
It's like two hours.
Actually, I don't have any more time, but that's okay.
So do we need to nominate Sue again, or is that done already?
And Sue needs to be.
So make a motion to nominate Sue, reappoint Sue to the lodge committee, audit committee.
Okay. So first of all, we have for Rich. So do you want to make it as a double motion?
Oh, sure. Sure.
Okay.
So the motion is, Bessie has moved to have Rich Kellum and Sue Folden be appointed to that committee, and it's been seconded, and you're voting on it now.
Yes. Okay? Okay. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. All right.
Your honor, I need to make a comment. I was unable to find anyone for Ward Three for the, my appointment to the tree commission, so if anyone out there wants to be on the tree commission, just, you know, let me know, or if anybody knows of anybody.
Any good loggers?
Any good loggers, yeah.
Sometimes if you go through what I've always done, because some of those committees were hard to fill, is somebody that hasn't been appointed that did apply to some of the other boards and committees, usually I contact them and ask if they would like to serve.
Yeah, I've done that, but I'm looking for Ward Three if we can, stick with that, and I just haven't, you know, I'm not sure what the city tree commission does anyway. I mean, some of these commissions really have me wondering if we need to waste staff's time for it, or if we can combine parks and trees or something. I don't know. It just, how worthy of a committee are they?
Well, and you could, and also check one of your other appointments from Ward Three, see if they want to serve on it too. They don't meet as often also.
That's the thing. I don't know what they do. That's why it's kind of hard to tell them what to do.
They're kind of a good outreach too when it comes to Arbor Week, so they get very active for Arbor Week, so.
You can learn a lot about what they do by reading the minutes. The minutes are short. I proofread them every month, so I know.
Yeah.
But they're short, and it's, it's just very matter of fact. They, they review applications for tree removals and.
Okay. There we go.
Yeah. Private property trees.
Ooh, it's gotten more important just in this last couple minutes. I'll find someone now.
Okay. All right. Let's see. Next is appointments to outside agency boards, and that's on page forty-five, forty-six. Is there a motion?
I would move to approve, to appoint everyone that is listed on this.
Okay. And is there a second?
Excuse me, ma'am. If we look at page forty-four, we need specific appointments for Cascade West Area Commission and then for Lynn County Local-
Oh, just the two for?
I apologize for interrupting.
Okay. No, that's fine. So, so Bessie, the motion would be for the Cascade West Area Commission on Transportation.
Oh, so that's all we need.
That's Dixon, Ron.
We don't need all of them then.
And then Rich is on the Lynn County Local Public Safety Coordinating Council. So it's the-
The current appointments attached are just for your reference.
Oh, yeah.
Two motions that we need are specific to Cascade West and to Lynn County Local Public Safety, and if you look at page forty-four, it gives you the options.
Okay. I would so move.
Okay. Is there a second?
Would you like Dick Olson or another council member to be on?
I think it's both. One's the alternate, one's the primary. Dick's been the primary, Ron's the alternate on that.
That's good.
All right.
Ron, Ron always comes to those meetings too.
He does, yeah.
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
Third.
Is there a second?
Second. I'll, I'll third it.
Okay. And, and with that, I did get an email today that we need to have those for the Cascade West Area Commission on Transportation submitted, so if staff can contact them and let them know the two that were appointed. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay. That is it.
Did that also include Lynn County Local Public Safety Coordinating Committee?
Yeah. That was including all three. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I had mentioned that. Okay. Public Safety Operating Levy. Peter?
Yes. Okay. In your, in your package, you have a memo from me which really recaps information that you got from Gina last August. It's a bit of a history about the public safety levy and how it is part of the city's funding every, every five years. It funds a substantial amount of police officers, firefighters, and, and as it's titled, the word ambulance is contained in it as well, so ambulance services contained. It needs to be resubmitted to the voters next, by, by 2021. Historically, the city has put it out to the voters one year ahead of time, so that if there were, was, if it was to, for some reason, go down, there'd be another chance to put it out. This time, in May, it'll be at year four. You have talked about in the past, during the summer, we've talked about revenue enhancements and cost containment measures, and when we talked about revenue, we talked about the possibility of increasing the levy rate from its current $1.15 to $1.25, $1.35. I would caution you that increasing the levy rate, while it sounds like it's increasing at a dime or twenty cents, would not yield the amount of revenue that you might think it would, because it's not a one-for-one increase due to compression. So it sounds, unfortunately, it's in the uncomfortable position of making a tax rate increase, which sounds, always sounds bad, and it doesn't give quite the benefit that you think it gives. Nevertheless, if you leave it at $1.15, you're making no progress towards the funding gaps that we've been talking about for about a year. So the safe way, as I've mentioned to you, is to leave it at $1.15. The levy has historically passed, and I would ask Mary or Gina to correct me if I'm wrong, with, with large margins of about, is it sixty-eight percent? Do you know?
I didn't bring that information.
Okay. That's all right. It's, it's been passed with large margins. In my mind, the more you raise the levy rate, the less likely that is to be the case.
When we raised it the one time, I believe it was a fifty-five, when we raised it one time, so, but the others have always won like about a sixty-five percent.
So what we need from you tonight is, is guidance on the rate, whether it's $1.15, $1.25, $1.35, and then also on the, the name of the measure, which you'll see in your, in your memo there. We've chosen to use the same name or recommend using the same name as last time, because a lot of our, the political action committees, signs that they've had, they've used in the past, have, have that same ballot title, so that would make the most sense. And with that, I'm open to any of your questions.
Okay. Questions?
So Peter, if we'd raise it a dime, I mean, I'm not in favor. Every time my tax bill comes out, it just, okay, it goes up and up and up. But ten cents, would, would three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, would that be enough for two police officers? I mean, this is public safety, I understand that, but the fire got, I mean, fire was more whole than the police, and so would that be like two officers, or what would it be?
Well, I would take you back to the, to the use of the word "whole" is kind of difficult because that changes all the time. So every year, we reassess what demand is on both police and fire, and all departments, for that matter. So the three hundred and sixty-eight thousand five hundred dollars which you see there, I would ask Gina if that, that's probably about, that's probably about a little over two police officers, about that? If you, if you want to equate it to those terms. But remember this, that that figure is likely to change if, as compression happens, because after this, other taxing jurisdictions may raise their levies, which would then push ours, squeeze ours down a little bit. So even though it says $1.25, you wouldn't be getting what you think you, you wouldn't be getting this three hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
So if we leave it the same, we might, I mean, if we raise it, we might end up with the same what we're getting now.
I'm sorry. Say that again?
It says, if we, even if we raised it, we could end up getting the same thing now now.
Well, it would take a long time for that to happen, but yeah, the point is that if, even though you raise it, you're not going to, it's not a one-for-one raise, you're not going to get that three, ultimately, you're not going to get that three hundred and sixty-eight thousand. You'll get less.
Well, I would say we leave it at, go ahead and put it on the ballot in May, leave it at the $1.15.
Not raise it at all?
I don't know.
I don't want to raise it until such time that we've done an evaluation of all of our, the importance of all of our spending. I mean, do it, if you're the same thing, we've got it. But until we know, until we know for sure, staff tells us what's, what's the things that are most important, just from their perspective, and then we then evaluate it, I mean, we're, it's a pig and a poke, as far as I can see.
Isn't that what we went through the last budget?
No, it's not.
What would you like to do, counsel?
I would go along with putting it through at the same rate.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yes, it'd be best to have a motion so staff can bring us back the ballot title.
Okay. And I saw the ballot title. Yes. I would move that we put the public safety levy for voter renewal on the May nineteenth, twenty twenty election with the same ballot title as we've used in the past.
At the same rate?
At the same rate.
At the same rate, yes. I'm sorry.
I would second that.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. All right. Is that it on that item, Peter?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Business from the council. Bessie?
I think I thought of something after last meeting, I forgot, so I'm going to say no for right now, and I'll think on that.
Okay. And Bill? Dick?
I don't.
Okay. Rich? And Alex?
Yes, last week I had two coffee with the counselors. One was on, on purpose, and the other one was by my mistake. I put it on sixteen January, and it should have been seventeen January, which was published, but I came away with a lot of concerns of the, from the people that attend the counseling senior center, and also people that, younger that attended the meeting, so I'll be summarizing my notes and getting those to Peter, but there were some very concerning issues in them, and I still have, it's like eight pages of feedback I received from over forty people, and it was very telling, very concerning, and so I'll send those over to Peter since I can summarize.
Okay. All right. Mike?
I'm okay.
Okay. And I don't think I had anything this evening, this time. Peter?
Well, I just wanted to mention to you that Chief Hornet's swearing-in will be next Friday at three o'clock right here in the council chambers, and then report to you that Counsel Kellum and I and Jorge Salinas met with LBCC last night and industry representatives to go over Counsel Kellum's questions and concerns. He asked some very pointed questions, we got some answers.